First item on our agenda is to accept a modified agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept this agenda as presented.
All those who say aye?
Aye.
Motion here, thank you. Community participation, is there anyone who would like to address the board?
School Board Member, Mr. Superintendent, I am Kayla Hudson. I am a teacher. Leslie Jeffries is the President of the Warren County Education Association. And the Warren County Education Association just wanted to thank you for your continued support of our teachers and staff in realizing that having experienced teachers and staff is welcome to help our students the best. And even when it's been hard and you've had to make hard choices, you have been very supportive. And we thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oakwood. Thank you for your continued support. Your dear, dear meeting and always supporting us. Thank you. Anyone else? Recognitions. Recognition of 2019 BSBA Business Honorable Recipients. Mr. Cresser.
Thank you. At our April 3rd, 2019 meeting, the Warren County School Board adopted resolutions recognizing three organizations as the 2019 School Boards Association Business Honorable Recipients. This was an award that was started by our friend and Board Chair, longtime Chair, Roy Boiles. And he was the President of the BSBA. And we've been very pleased to be able to do this each year. And those organizations were Fox's Pizza Den at Front Royal, Spalanquer's Frozen Custard and Cavan Burger Incorporated, and Walter's Cluer. So I don't know if any of those representatives made it tonight. I know we were struggling to get folks here. Yay! Come on up. If you would come in.
I'm Walter's Cluer. Excellent. The wonderful things you're doing with Lee Wilson Morrison. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So all that. Let me hold this up and we're gonna take some pictures.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Position me wherever you like. Okay. All right. Let's make sure I'm gonna cover up your face.
Thank you very much.
That's super. Thank you.
Your support is greatly appreciated.
And it is really, we are enjoying it tremendously. So I'll let all my colleagues know.
Thank you very much.
Next is the 2019 Roy K. Boiles Wall of Recognition Inductees.
All right. The Roy K. Boiles Wall of Recognition was created in 2017 by the Warren County School Board. The inaugural inductee of the Roy K. Boiles Wall of Recognition was Roy K. Boiles, a longstanding supporter and contributor to the education system in Warren County. Roy exemplified the criteria needed to be considered as a member of the Wall of Recognition. Nominees must have had a direct connection to Warren County Public Schools. Examples of nominees are any Warren County employee, school board members, other local or regional board members, a specific group that has had a dynamic influence or impact from Warren County Public Schools. So tonight, we are very, very pleased to have two nominees here this evening that are going to be inductees. And I'm gonna go ahead and just read what's on the plaques, and then we're gonna ask them to come up here. So the first one is Lillian Baltimore Sloan. And Mrs. Sloan was with us for quite a while. She worked, began teaching in Warren County in 1948. I hope I got all this right. Leslie Jeffries was the principal, Helen Jay Barbour was a coworker, and Leslie Fox was her supervisor. QB Gasky was the superintendent, and she was the only local teacher at the time to have a bachelor's degree. That would be amazing. She taught in Fall Pier County from 1957 to 1962. She then returned to Warren County as the first African American to teach at Warren County High School. She remained in the Warren County School System until her retirement in June 1987, for 37 years in education. During tenure, she completed classes at Longwood College, Virginia State University, James Madison University, University of Virginia, and Virginia Tech, as well as numerous location conferences. She also approved of teachers for Warren County Schools. Can I hire you back to do that? She's received numerous recognitions, a Mountain Map, a Front Royal Women's Resource Center hats off, 2017 award, and she's an NAACP member, honorary award, 2007. And she has a quote, Proverbs 3:5 through 6, "To trust in the Lord with all your heart and do not rely in wrong understanding him. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make you straight to your path." So Mrs. Sloan, if you would bring any of your family members to come up here too, and we'd like to present you with this. There you go. Awesome. Hey. That's good, we're all so good looking.
I wanna say something about this family. I've known them for golly, 50 years now. Mrs. Sloan taught with my mother. Mr. Sloan worked with my father. Deborah went to school with me. Sheila went to school with my husband. Devin is one of our teachers now. He's our culinary arts teacher, and he has paid for Dollar's wedding. They're just a wonderful family, and I can't give anybody more deserving. Thank you.
Our other recipient this evening is Dr. John Lee Blanton. Graduated, he went to the University of Virginia in 1955, 56, run out of college in 56 through 60. University of Virginia got a BA in Economics and Political Science, and he was at the Virginia Polytechnic Institute, got a certificate in Advanced Studies Administration, and also the Virginia Polytechnic Institute had a School Administration degree. This guy's had a lot of jobs here. 1967, he was the headmaster of John S. Moseley Academy. 1969, he was the assistant principal of Lee Wilson Morrison Elementary. 1971, he was the principal of A.S. Rhodes Elementary. 73, he was the principal of Lee Wilson Morrison Elementary. 77, he was the principal of Warren County Junior High. 1988, he was the principal of Warren County Middle School. 1989, he became Director of Federal Programs. He was the acting superintendent in 1996. And then he ended his career here as, in 1997, 2008, as the Administrative Assistant to Superintendent. John had a love and offered selfless devotion to his community. His focus in whatever role he held was to support students and family any way he could. He invested his time, his skills, and his funds to ensure students have every opportunity to meet success. He had a recognition, it was pretty nice, in 2008, he had the John Lee Blanton track at Wildcat Stadium named after him. So you can all go down there and run a track. And his book, very apt to his, one of his great loves, is Athletics. It says, "If you're a talented athlete, use your talent to get an education." For Dr. Blanton, if you would want to come up and bring your family. We'll get you out of the toilet.
Anyway, sorry. And I also wanna say, I'm just Dr. Blanton, my mother's daughter, had him as principal back when he was in Washington back in the, since we've been late so far. So thank you. Yes, if you all wanna sneak out now, thank you for coming. The next item on our agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept your consent agenda as written.
All those who say aye?
Aye.
Motion here, thank you. Records. I am able to do this because...
I just wanna start by recognizing, I feel like I'm here tonight with teaching royalty with Mrs. Sloan and with Dr. Blanton. Dr. Blanton was my principal in first grade, in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and then gaining my first job. So very, just for these students who are here tonight, feel very fortunate, just to celebrate what they've done for our community.
When was your first job?
In school suspension. I came to Dr. Blanton, I said, "Dr. Blanton, I'm graduating. I need a job. I've gotta have a job." He put his arm around me, said, "Son, I've got just the job for you." So I'd like to start with, many of us are familiar with National Decision Day, when we see athletes and being signed to different colleges. But today, we celebrated a National Decision Day at our high schools. And I wanted to just celebrate a few of our students. We'll start with, first up, picture we get, Angelique English is going to New England College, and Sharon Bitter, who's going to Lord Fairfax Community College. Next up, Austin Bolver is going into the United States Marine Corps. Elizabeth Keener is going to attend West Virginian University. Maury Coons and Savannah Hayver are going to attend James Madison University. Then Lindsay Johnson is going to attend Virginia Tech. And Keegan Brady is going to Bluefield College. So we celebrate National Decision Day to recognize all of our students for their post-secondary plans, to encourage and remind students that it's time to make a decision, to support the best match and fit for each student, to motivate and excite our younger students, because these students are leading by example, whether they're going into the military, going straight into the workforce, perhaps they're going to attend community college, perhaps they're going to attend a university. But we wanna celebrate all of them, and we wanna support them as they take this step. They've been with us for 13 years, this is a big step we're making. And next up, we'd like to share a video with you from our Blue Ridge Technical Center, and again, the theme is "I can do this because..."
"I can do this because Blue Ridge Technical Center has helped me attain skills of all these, I'm going for pre-certification now."
"I am George Jones, and I can do this because this is the best, probably one of the best I've ever tried."
"Hi, I'm Alan Roy, and I can do this because this is the Blue Ridge Technical Center."
So this is motor control, so this connects around to the control panel, which is a control of the engine.
"I realize that I think you have Mr. Abel of Blue Ridge Technical Center."
"Actually, I'm Mary, and I can do this because of Mr. Abel of Blue Ridge Technical Center."
So speaking with Miss Baker at the Blue Ridge Technical Center, we thought it would be more appropriate for you to see what our students are learning and what they're able to do in their natural settings. Several of those students are going on to continue career technical training next year, and some are going straight into work because of the training they receive at the Blue Ridge Technical Center. But next, we do have a group of students, some from Warren County High School and some from Skyline High School, here to celebrate Warren County Public Schools and to share a little bit about what they're gonna do next year. And I don't know who's going first, so I'm interested to see.
Well, hello. My name is Michael Silik, and I'm a senior at Warren County High School. I currently serve as the Senior Class President and as the President of the Interact Club. I'm also a member of the National Honor Society, marching in concert bands, as well as the varsity golf team. And after I graduate on June 1st, just a month away, I will be continuing my education at the University of Virginia. At UVA, I played on double majoring in Astrophysics as well as Computer Science, which actually a passion of mine that was cultivated by one of my teachers, Dr. Castor. I also plan on being a member of the Cavalier Marching Band, as well as a member of the Student Government Organization at the university. After graduating from UVA, I plan on pursuing a doctorate in Astrophysics and working for the Northrop Grumman Corporation. And if my life goes as planned, I will be working on an initiative to move manufacturing and agriculture off of the Earth's surface and into our orbit. Now, this is an initiative that will significantly reduce our impact on the environment and preserve our standard of living for generations to come. This is also an initiative that will take over 100 years to complete. It takes a significant amount of self-discipline and drive for an individual to spend their entire life working on a project they know will not be finished in their lifetime. And this is the type of discipline and drive that I received from my education at Warren County High School. Over the past four years, my teachers have motivated me to pursue my dreams and have laid the foundation for my future. And I am forever grateful for the educational and extracurricular opportunities that have been given to me at Warren County, and no matter where my future takes me, I will be proud to call myself a Wildcat.
Thank you.
Hello. Michael is actually one of the few people I've ever met in my life that I said, "I would much like to run her precedent." Good evening. My name is Molly May Metter. I have been in the Warren County Public School System all of my life, and I will be furthering my education at Virginia Tech. I'm a first-generation college student, and without my teachers, I would never have thought that I would go into Tech University. It was through the drive that I've had since my very first club, which was International Club, that exposed me to different cultures and ethnicities, and gave me my first leadership role as being president when I was a freshman. From there, I moved on to the Swan program, where I was president of Key Club, and I furthered that education myself in how to help the community and better Front Royal. My junior year, I did something that has impacted my heart and my passion for community service. I started a program called Future Einstein's at San Luis Pueblo Library. This is a program I run every single month in partnership with the Library of Funding for Kiwanis, where young children, elementary school and middle school, are able to have hands-on free STEM experiments, something I wish I had as a kid, in showing them that they can pursue a career past high school in something that is so exciting, such as STEM. My passion for STEM started when I applied and accepted to a nonvista governor's school for science, math, and technology, which is something I'm so grateful and fortunate to have been offered in the Warren County School System. From then on, I started an internship at Pink Concussions, a nonprofit organization focusing on traumatic brain injuries in females. This was something very important to me as I had had five concussions in my life, one affecting my eyesight and needing glasses. From then on, I wanted to study gender research and neuroscience, and I went on to pursue a lot of research and symposiums, meeting people and researchers from Harvard, Stanford, Johns Hopkins, these profound institutions, where they were researching something so enlightening and something so passionate to me that I wanted to pursue that as well. Attending governor's school, I started a research project that furthered my education and my research capabilities, and led me to win multiple science fairs and strengthened that passion, something that didn't go unrecognized, something that Mr. Doctor Smith made sure I was aware of. These teachers held my hand but pushed me, instead of holding it gracefully, to always pursue those dreams and to never stop. It's institutions like Warren County and governor's school that teach kids that, yes, you can be educated, but you can do more than be educated. You can understand the material and then use the world as your template. Your experimental design is not beholden to the school, but is the whole world, and I hope to continue that at Virginia Tech. I'm a senior class president, and I am also a member of National Honor Society, and essentially I am the president of Key Club. These have shown me that I can be a leader, and I can have peers, that I can be strengthened among. And I plan on continuing that at Virginia Tech as I study neuroscience and computer engineering. And I thank you, and I thank my teachers, and every single one of them, none above the other, but a whole above me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Bolks. I'm a senior and soon-to-be graduate of Warren County High School. Throughout high school, I have been involved in Interact Club, NHS, where I'm the vice president, and I'm a four-year member of both varsity soccer and volleyball. Next year, I will be attending Virginia Tech. Go ahead. And I've been accepted into the School of Engineering and Art College. Throughout my four years of high school, I've been truly blessed with amazing support from teachers, coaches, and administrators. You know, our small-time community creates an environment where I developed personal connections with my teachers, which makes me so much more appreciative for all they've done for me. I've had an academically challenging but rewarding high school career. The classes Warren County offers have assisted me in developing a strong work ethic, as well as study routines that I believe helped me succeed in college. And none of this would be possible without my teachers, of course. My teachers have gone above and beyond their role as just high school teachers, coming in early to help me with AP review for tests, writing letters of recommendation for scholarships, which has had a huge impact on me, and even serving as mentors in my field of interest, which is engineering. One example out of many of teachers who's done these things for me, and more, is Dr. Castor. I just talk about him because I've been in three of his AP classes now, and while they have been the most difficult on my class load, they've also been the most enjoyable and rewarding. He has really stepped outside the boundaries of being a teacher to become a mentor for me in my future major of engineering. In the past, I have firsthand experienced prejudice and battering mindsets about some males in the field of engineering and how they feel about females in STEM majors. In contrast, Dr. Castor has served as nothing but positive role model for me, encouraging, motivating me in a way that has reaffirmed my love for math and science. In transitioning from high school to college, my positive experiences with Warren County's public school lead me with no worries that I'll be successful in encouraging tech school and engineering. I move forward, prepare, motivated, and determined to succeed as a direct result of my time at Warren County. So I thank you guys for the opportunity to speak, and just encourage you to keep supporting our teachers, because they can have incredible impacts on life, just like they have right now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Riley Hirsch, and I'm currently a student at Scanlon High School. I began applying for college in August of 2018, and was accepted to my top two choices, UVA and Virginia Tech. Although both schools provided great education, I committed to becoming a hokie and accepted my offer of admission from Virginia Tech. I was accepted to their School of Science and plan on majoring in biomedical science and engineering. I've always enjoyed school and challenging myself to take the hardest classes Scanlon has to offer. I've completed over 40 college credits just through attending dual-world classes offered at Scanlon High School, and an additional four credits through online classes at LFCC. I've been a part of my school's varsity volleyball team for three years now. I was also nominated as president of the National Honor Society. I'm proud to say on May 11th, I will be graduating LFCC with a certificate in general education. education. I've taken classes ranging from AP US history to AP literature to AP calculus. I've been blessed with the opportunity to take these classes to better my education and get prepared for college these next four years. I realize these rigorous classes seem agonizing, but the hardest classes contain some of the best teachers. My teachers at Scandlin High School have been preparing me for college since my first day of eighth grade. Teachers here at Scandlin care about their students and take the time to make sure each student understands the material. I build bonds with the teachers and administrators at Scandlin High School. I will miss them tremendously, and their help will follow me through the regulars at Virginia Tech. Thank you.
How many of you?
I don't need to.
First time. Hello, everyone. My name is Wei Long Lu. I am a senior in Scandlin High School, and today is my sixth year in the United States. I'm from China.
Congratulations.
In our first two, three years in Scandlin High School, I was struggling so bad with like my language, everything. And through our teachers' help, like during the weekend, we would look at the library and the teacher would be there and help me. Ms. Lewis, my math teacher, and Ms. Hawkins, my English teacher. So proud of myself. I mean, I joined the Navy two months ago. After high school, I was deployed to Michigan.
Thank you. Did you speak English prior to coming here?
No, I did not speak English.
Wow. You're doing an excellent job. Very good.
Hello. My name is Hyun Joo, and academically, I'm kind of nowhere in that line, but I was...
How about wrestling?
Wrestling? Yes, man. That's...I kind of was like going through high school, and when I succeeded in wrestling, I kind of just swayed away from academics. I got lazy. I was like, oh, I can do all this and I don't need any of that. And then, but when it came down to senior year in colleges, I didn't want to do anything. And I was being pushed by teachers, mainly Mr. Waters, my coach, and all the administration. They were, or administration, they were kind of like in my ear because they didn't want to see me just go nowhere. So that was probably the biggest reason I am now going to Bluefield College. I'll be wrestling there. They're scholarshiping me for wrestling, but I'm also going academically for criminal justice, which I'm hoping to be in the Department of State. I'll be interning, I'll have an internship with them over the summer. The summer, there's like foreign affairs and counter threat with them. But yeah, the administration and teachers is kind of the reason I'm going to college in the first place. So I'm thankful to them because they gave me the opportunity to actually do something with my life when I was just going down. I'm thankful to you. That was a good meme, wasn't it? That was a good one. So, thank you for having me and have a great night.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and speaking. I'm always amazed at how you young people can get up and speak and do so well. I've watched a lot of you grow up. I know you don't know I've watched you, but I've been to wrestling matches, I've been to volleyball games, and I've seen people in the band stands, and I've seen you. And I wish you nothing but the best in your college career and in all of your endeavors in the future. You have a lot going for you. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent report.
Just a quick word before these guys run away, and then you can run away. I think you can run away. I just want to thank you for coming out. It's been a pleasure to watch you learn and grow through your high school career. Like was mentioned, you know, we all watching what you're doing all the time, and it's great to see our students grow into young men and women. When I see this kind of thing, I have no doubt our world's in good hands. So thanks for what you do.
And thank you for the support that you gave and the accolades that you gave to your teachers and your mentors and the administration. Without them, we would be lost. We do have a fantastic staff. Great. Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything? Let me take off. I know Mr. Williams will.
Absolutely, Chief. Madam Chair. Young wrestler. The mat will open a lot of doors for you, and it'll push you through. You just have the same determination you had on that mat when there was 15 seconds left and you were down by the wall. I'm sure you remember those days.
Yes.
So the education's where it's at. You'll do well. The other group, I was kind of like him. My hat's off to every one of them. Very well spoken. I mean, just truly amazing what you stand for, how you carry yourself. Keep following those dreams. They will come true. And to Mr. Syllogi, that's tough, knowing it's a 100-year endeavor and you won't see the end result, so that's true drive. I do, that amazes me. I mean, of course, today's society is instant gravitation. I want to see it and do it now, you know? So, young man holding the baby, congratulations. The ladies, wow. Engineers, something physics, I think? I can't remember, bro. I'm sorry. It was too much. It was just like, wow! And I apologize, but... Virginia Tech instead of UVA? Oh, no. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. You're a great school, but that's awesome, and congratulations to each and every one of you, and to your parents and for the support you gave your teachers. Believe it or not, you helped them grow. You really did. So thank you.
And make sure you go home and thank your parents.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? You want me to leave, go home, go to work, or hang out? I mean, these last four weeks of school. Thank you. Superintendent report.
You know, the other thing I would like to say from board is that next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, the Board of Supervisors is going to be voting on the Calum Vols in schools, as you know, is a big part of that budget. The main component of the school budget is getting the funds to be able to change our teacher salaries to be more competitive. And that is a push that we have tried as a board for many years. We're on our way there. This could be phase one of a three-year phase that would make us competitive in the region and would change what we're able to do about retaining teachers. But I just encourage everyone to support the Board of Supervisors in their decisions. It's a tough one. It's a tough one for our community, but at the end of the day, strong schools make a strong community. And we all know that, and the stronger we can be, the better our community looks like.
Thank you. School Board reports. Do you want to?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's hard to believe I'm sitting here reading thirty days to children graduate. I mean, it's hard to believe it's already there. It's been such a quick year. I feel lucky and proud of that group, in every group. I mean, in construction, the video that Mr. Bolks had put together is just wonderful. I mean, the amount of nurses and electricians and plumbers, auto mechanics, welders that we turn out, those are invaluable trades in today's society. So they should get the same amount of money as everybody else. I'd just like to see it continue that way. And to echo Mr. Drescher, I hope and pray that the May 7th vote goes in our favor for our budget, not for us. Doesn't affect us per se, but it affects a lot of lives of our teachers. I hope it makes Mr. Smith's job a whole lot easier, so we don't have to turn over. And the video, those students show how good our faculty really is. So we need to, as a community, as Mr. Drescher said, take care of those folks. I mean, bottom line, it's a tough decision, I know, but as Mr. Drescher said, we've been working on it for years. I've been here about four, over four now, and ever since I've been here, we have talked and talked and talked about if this year's year is happening. And we need to continue just to stay in touch and take care of the children as we're supposed to, not only as a school board, but as a community. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, I'm not real happy before I'm gonna tell you all, but it's time for me to come off the board at the end of this year. So I'm just letting people know, the press, that I will not be pursuing the position as chairman of board from the Shannon Door District. Been a lovely time with you guys, certainly really has. Quite a learning experience, probably a little more harder learning curve in education than there is in healthcare, where I really spent a lot of time. But thank you, everybody, for helping me, and I hope that I've been able to contribute a little something.
Yeah, but we thank you.
This is Kaylee. I think Mr. Williams and Mr. Drescher have said it best, to echo all of those thoughts, and it's been an amazing evening here, and so you can be proud.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
I'll echo what everybody has said. Because I have the longest tenure, I guess I have the longest institutional history. We were at crossroads when I came on the board in 2002, and Board of Supervisors at that time had the wherewithal and the gumption, for lack of a better word, to move forward with a building plan that had been long dormant. We can see what became of that. We're at another crossroads. Our Board of Supervisors, as Mr. Williams and we've all pointed out, we know where the money comes from. It doesn't fall from the sky, it doesn't come on a tree, it comes from taxes, it comes from both pockets. But our community needs good, experienced teachers. We, I've said it before, we keep turning them out for other counties, and we need to put the brakes on that, and we need to step forward and do something for our teachers and make sure that there's a future for this school system. I hope that they will make the right choice. I know it's tough, and they just need to keep their vision forward and move forward with what's right.
Well said. I agree. We were giving these nice sheets of schedules, all the different activities to plug into between now and the last day of school. There are a lot of things there. I hope that we can each find, too reprieve to attend. I know I received an invitation the other week for a prom last Saturday for Warren County High School, and I had gone to the prom as a school member before, but if you know me, I'm really, what's that? Well, that's exactly what I thought. They really don't want to see an old woman in a prom dress. Plus, I'm a blue jeans person, and it's really tough for me to get into a dress, and you know, I just thought, let them have their life and enjoy it. But do take the time to look this over and see if there's something you can attend. There are a lot of theater productions that are big one on. They wrapped up last weekend, and choral concerts, so a lot of different things to take a look at. Action agenda. Approval of Rapperware 2019 DSBA school board policy updates. Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. In February 2019, BSBA submitted 51 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing the updated policies has been repaired by staff members noting the proposed changes. An additional 16 policies are presented for review but have no recommended revisions. The first reading of the proposed changes was the April 3rd School Board meeting. The second reading of the policies and an opportunity to discuss the changes was at the April 17th School Board meeting, work session. The recommendation for the, tonight's meeting, is to approve the policy updates for inclusion in the Warren County Public Schools Policy Manual as recommended by staff. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think we've all had time to go over everything and ask questions of the past month, unless anyone else has. Any further questions on the policies?
Then, please, all pro motions.
General Commission, February 2019, the SDA policy updates. We approve of inclusion of Warren County Public Schools Policy Manual as recommended by staff.
All those favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion, Harris. Thank you. I think you're gonna be standing up there for a few minutes. I think there you are. Approval of custodial services contract update and a little declaration.
Thank you. On January 1st, 2015, Warren County Public Schools entered into an agreement with GCA Education Services to provide custodial services for all Warren County Public Schools. Warren County Public Schools renewed the contract with GCA for the 2016-17 school year, the 2017-18 school year, and the 2018-19 school year. The recommendation is to renew the contract with GCA services again for the 2019-20 school year. GCA has agreed to keep the cost sustained as of 2018-19 school year. The contract price for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 will be $1,959,502.80. The contract price shall be paid in 12 monthly installments of $163,291.90. The recommendation is to approve the amendment to the service agreement with GCA Education Services and ABM Company to extend custodial services from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, contingent upon the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 budget. Just a side note, the number of employees that have remained with Warren County Public Schools since the transition to GCA Education Services is 26 employees, which is about 51% of the custodial workforce now. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Shepherd, is this the last year before it has to go back out to the...
That is correct.
All the books?
Yes, we will go out with it likely February of next year.
Twenty-one. All right. I do.
Someone want to all pro motion?
Madam Chair, I move that approval be given for the superintendent to sign the amendment for the service agreement with GCA Education Services Incorporated and ABM Company to extend custodial services from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $8,959,502.80, contingent upon the adoption of the fiscal 2020 budget.
Second.
All those favor, aye? Motion, Harris. Thank you. Approval of contract for asbestos removal at AS Rhodes Elementary School.
So a quick note before I start reading this. New bids for AS Rhodes renovation will be published, the RFP, the bid invitation will be published in the newspaper, or the Virginia Daily and Winchester Star, this weekend. So we are out for bid for the renovation of AS Rhodes Elementary School.
And this is separate from...
No, it is. It is. Prior to the renovation of AS Rhodes Elementary School, asbestos will need to be abated. There is approximately 600 linear feet of asbestos pipe installation in the crawl space and 6,500 square foot of floor tile and hallway in several classrooms. There may be some additional abatement needed in the floor mastic. As the asbestos abatement removal is occurring, the floor mastic will be tested to determine if it contains asbestos. If so, we will have the floor mastic abated. All the asbestos at AS Rhodes Elementary School is encapsulated and not harmful to our students or staff. Asbestos needs abated when items containing asbestos fiber is disturbed. The recommendation is to contract with Apex Companies to abate the asbestos at AS Rhodes Elementary School. Apex has determined the cost of the abatement for the pipe insulation and the floor tile will be $55,115. The cost to remove the floor mastic, if the floor mastic contains asbestos, is $4,250. The total cost would be $59,365. Apex has a cooperative contract with Prince William County Public Schools, which contains language in Section 38 that allows Warren County School Board to contract Apex for asbestos removal. On the cover sheet, there is a summary of the work that's going to be provided, and the recommendation is to contract with Apex Companies for the abatement of asbestos at AS Rhodes Elementary School.
These are the areas that have been determined of asbestos, yes?
Yes.
Questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, the only question I have is, they intentionally put, I mean, most of the pipelines in the crawl spaces, I understand, well prepared, but they put in there a bunch of soil in the crawl space. Is it all soil underneath there? I mean, I've never been in that crawl space, is the ground what I want out?
It is, there is soil. I'm not sure if there's groundwork, but it is not a hard surface like concrete or anything.
So my question is, if they're tearing out this pipe insulation and some of it falls, whatever, gets into the soil, where does that leave us by building lives? They come back and say, it's going to cost more?
They could, they could. And it's, and there will be, there will be a person there monitoring the asbestos abatement, and they will do tests as the abatement is ongoing. So we will know immediately if there is any type of...
I read it, I mean, it's very thorough, and the way they test and all that. But I guess the question, the real question is, are they going to put down this clean or plastic, whichever you want to call it? So, three days fall, and it's wrapped up instead of, it just falls where it may.
My experience with asbestos removal at Reston Jeffries Elementary School, the answer is yes, they did that.
I do.
So let me make sure that that's part of this contract as well.
Just so we don't get by the way.
Questions? What's the motion?
Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Chair, I think asbestos, a move for approval be given to contract with Apex Companies LLC for the abatement of asbestos at AS Rhodes Elementary School not to exceed $59,365.
To second.
I'll second the amendment. Just want to point out, since we are on video, the ability of school systems to utilize contracts that are created for other school systems, we're using one of Prince William as we, we've done that in numerous contracts, and actually some have tagged on to our contracts just so that we can assure our citizens that we're giving the best price and best value for what we're doing. And with that, I second the motion.
Very good point, I should love it, yes.
All those favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Approval of food management services contract. Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. On Thursday, February 14th, 2019, Warren County Public Schools advertised a request for proposal for a new service management company for the purpose of entering into contract for the operation of the food service program for our school system. On Monday, March 4th, one firm, Sedexo, attended the mandatory pre-proposal conference. On Friday, March 22nd, 2019, Warren County Public Schools received one proposal in response to the RFP from Sedexo. In Sedexo's proposal, there was no cost increase for the administrative cost for the management fee. Sedexo's administrative cost remains at sixteen cents per male, and the management fee remains at thirteen cents per male. The management fee will not be paid unless a program generates a minimum guaranteed financial return of $72,750. The agreement includes the following. $72,750 guaranteed return, $6,000 annual scholarship, $6,500 backpack contribution to the backpack food program, $2,500 grant to introduce new programs in Warren County, $1,000 contribution to the Warren County Education Endowment. In Sedexo's proposal, there is an option for the current food service employees to become Sedexo employees. The recommendation is for Sedexo to employ all food service staff except the administrative assistant, which includes the following. All employees will receive a three percent pay increase. If an employee is making less than $10 per hour, their pay will be adjusted to a minimum of $10 per hour. Sedexo will increase all employees' workday from five and a half hours to six hours per day. Sedexo will pay employees every two weeks. Sedexo will offer employees a 401K retirement plan, which will match fifty cents for every $1 an employee contributes up to six percent. Sedexo will offer all employees health insurance at a premium equal to or less than their current health plan. Sedexo will offer employees a comparable healthcare plan to all employees except the current employees enrolled in the Key Advantage 250, who will be offered a Care First from Thousand Health Insurance Plan. Sedexo will offer all full-time employees tuition assistance up to $2,500 per year for pre-approved culinary or food service courses, and Sedexo will keep the number of sick leave days the same as Warren County Public Schools. The recommendation, our recommendation is for Sedexo to employ the food service staff with these... With these recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Their working schedule will be equivalent to the school days?
That is correct. So food service staff currently work one hundred eighty-three or one hundred eighty-six days, maybe in a couple of days before school starts, and then maybe the day after, you know, so...
The school leaves?
One hundred eighty days.
Good audio.
No, I mean, we discussed this pretty thoroughly at the work session, and now, Mrs. Shepherd has a chance to revive that work with Sedexo. Looks like a win for her, and I think you've already been working with Sedexo for years, and great healthcare, nice school, okay?
Not just a win for the university, but also...
And post-school system will make accomplishments. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think everybody does in this scenario. I can't see who doesn't.
One of the things that I did mention is our, if the food service employees move to Sedexo, they may be eligible for unemployment during the summer months, which currently they are not eligible for unemployment during the summer months.
Interesting.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I move approval be given to contract with Sedexo for a food service management department with all current food service employees except the administrative assistant transforming to Sedexo's employment on July 1st, 2019. I firmly with my approval of proposed agreement by Virginia Department of Education, the superintendent. It's authorized to sign a proposed Sedexo food service management agreement with the 2019-2020 school year and accept any administrative non-material changes as required by Virginia Department of Education.
Second.
All those favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. It was a long one. Discussion special board, special board meeting date. Mr. Drescher, if you want to talk about that?
Next Tuesday evening, the Board of Supervisors, as we've mentioned, will be voting on the county budget. Depending on what they do with that, and we just really don't know at this point, we will need to make some decisions rather quickly in terms of setting priorities, if we get the full amount that we requested and you approve, or we get something less than that. So we thought it would be beneficial to that process to meet as soon as we can after that meeting, to hear what they did, and if we have any direct feedback from them in terms of the amount that we're going to get. So we may not be able to make any decisions that day, but we certainly could have a discussion about, this is what we know we're going to get if we do, and help us, you know, guide the priorities of what one staff will work on, so we'd be ready the following week to approve salary scales and move forward with our budget. But we're getting, we're getting to the point where it's, we're getting to the point of being late in terms of offering contracts. It's going to impact us even now, being, not being able to do it before this date, but the quicker we can do that, the better.
I know some of this I've already discussed. Meeting Wednesday morning, Mr. Wells is not going to be able, you're not going to be around today. Are you going to be around Wednesday morning?
Wednesday, please.
Days? Next Wednesday?
Sure.
Nine o'clock in the morning? If that works for you, Mr. Williams?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just bring a quick delay.
We, it'll be very quick. We may not have a lot of information other than knowing what passed and what didn't. But I think it's important that we meet, and we can't meet before the next meeting.
I do. I guess I do have, well, two questions, Mr. Drescher. One, that Board of Supervisors made is at seven, you know, the night before, correct?
Yes.
And then you said we're kind of late getting contracts together, is that because the Board of Supervisors were late getting them?
It's been a more drawn-out process this year than...
All right, thank you.
Okay, so nine o'clock, Wednesday, May 8th. And Mr. Drescher will have coffee in breakfast, of course?
Absolutely.
Okay. None of you?
We're going to meet down at the boardroom desk.
All right. Thirty-fourth Annual DSBA Conference on Education is July 23rd at the Mitchell and Marriott. If anyone is interested in attending, please let Mr. Valentine know. Is there any further business? Me adjourned.